You're well-staying yourself. But you make sure to tell me that the clocks in the school was 10 seconds slow first, but now they're a minute slow. So everyone's looking at their phone books and says, well, they're time, no.
All right.
And wait, nice. It's something I do in the past.
Me and then at 6:00 I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you could please scan and join me in the pledge of ovation. Hi, pleasure.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First to go, in absent from the meeting. Okay, now just run a few more. All right, we'll go on to the minutes. Minutes of September 14th of 2021, both public and non-public.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes, public and non-public from September 14th, 2021.
On second. Now, we need to discuss it. Kathleen. Here. On page three. Line 11, and also 13. I would like to see it read Kathleen asked for a future updated report for Butler Bus to reference the changes in red, similar to those in the handbook updates. Oh, right, okay. And then on line 13, where it says Kathleen said there is a lot of confusion, I mentioned errors and confusion. And then it should read on the root sheet, especially M10, and I gave the example of M10 traveling two roads at the same time. And on page four. Line 28 and 29. Where it says Amanda Isabel informed the board. Excuse me, Amanda Isabel informed the board, we, it shouldn't be we, students should be there, will not be going anywhere if it isn't safe. And a similar thing on line 33. The last sentence there, we are not sending kids anywhere very far now and won't if it isn't safe for field trips. It doesn't have anything to do with how the board feels. That's all I ask. Thank you, Kathleen. Good. Anyone have anything else? Stay now. All in favor of the public and non-public meeting minutes of September 14th of 2021, with the corrections by Kathleen Stacy, please say yes or no. Yes. May I have approved?
You just get some more, get it started.
All in favor of the motion as approved, which is from Kathleen, please probably say an aye.
Aye.
Voice, absent. Okay, we have our first public comment for the night. Does anyone? Dr. Bupin, welcome.
I'll start. Went ahead with the mask mandate for all universal schools, made the right decision, and followed the CDC and American Academy of Pediatrics recommendations. I won't go into all the details, but we've had cases here, there's been cases in other schools, other districts, hospitalizations, and deaths increasing in the state of New Hampshire. To my knowledge, there's not been a student death as yet in New Hampshire, but it's a matter of numbers. And I think we need to continue to do what you have already done in maintaining all precautions that we can. So please do so.
Thank you, Dr. Bupin. Do I have anyone else with a public comment? Yes, can you state your name and your town, please?
Deb Schindler, Canaan. I also just like to follow up that comment and say I really applaud the measures that the district has taken so far. And it seems that the measures that we have taken have eliminated spread within the school, to be honest with you. We've had quite a few cases. I know we keep getting those emails, but it appears so far that it is not spread at school. It appears to be coming from the community itself. And I also really appreciate Amanda's email that she sent out that basically kind of pushed back on the community a little bit and said, hey, you know, pizza parties and sleepovers don't help. Yeah, I really commend you for following the CDC guidelines on this one. It's helped immensely and I encourage you to keep with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Any other public comments? Tina. We're going to move into our presentation tonight, which is the review of the COVID-19 protocols on our school. And we'll get off with you, Amanda.
Yeah, so it's called a presentation so that there's adequate time for the public to comment and respond. Full transparency, I do not have fancy presentation for you all today. I'm simply here to say that, yes, we have had 26 reported cases of COVID across the district, the majority of those coming from the Indian River School. There has been, to date, no spread in the classrooms, and that is because we have implemented every single mitigation strategy possible. And I say every single one, I'll say every single one, maybe not possible, but that we had implemented last year. When we started to see a rise in the cases, I took it upon myself in collaboration with Tina Fleming to add to more. We stopped mixing cohorts of kids at recess at the Indian River School, and we also stopped moving students in the classroom. The teachers are back to movement. So about halfway through, when Ms. Fleming and I noticed that there was quite, you know, quite a few cases popping up, we added more strategies to protect our students. So I just want everyone to be aware of that. And yes, and in the email I sent on Friday, I did ask the public to stop beating up the teachers, the principals. We are working very, very hard at the schools to make sure that we are doing the best for our students under the perimeter set for us. And as I explained tonight, we have added more strategies to help protect kids. And I will also say that there has been quite a bit of support for the strategies that we have implemented and an appreciation for the transparency of the district. I am not bound to send out those letters, and trust me, it would be a lot easier if I didn't have to, but I do, because I want the public to know what's happening in the schools and I want to make sure that everybody understands that we are doing the best that we can for our kids. And once again, to date, we have not had classroom spread at the Indian River School. A few other cases have popped up at the other schools, and we are doing a really good job of catching sick kids before they enter school. That is the screening process that was not popular, I will say, at first with some of the administrators, but we are catching sick kids for the most part. If kids lie to us and walk in and say, I feel fine, and they don't have a fever or a runny nose or anything, or a cough that we can catch automatically, they might make it to first period, and then they tell someone in first period that they don't feel well and go to the nurse. And as soon as that is triggered, you are going for a COVID test. I will say to people listening that COVID in our middle school students has consistently presented as a cold. That is one thing I can say. It looks like a cold. Kids that we're sending out for headaches or nausea are not necessarily coming back with positive COVID tests, but kids that we send out with cold-like symptoms are coming back as COVID causes it. So I just want to make sure that that is understood by the public, that if your child is unvaccinated and looks like they have a cold, it very well may be COVID. So that is my presentation at this time. I would ask when the board discusses it that they understand that I have implemented two more strategies. I would like to keep those in place. I also think that regardless of if we were looking at the rate of community spread, we would still be in the red, right? If not red, er, than it was in September when we opened, or August when we opened. But, you know, I think this is a good thing, this type of presentation is a good thing to revisit probably on a monthly basis, just so that we're keeping updated. I can let you all know and let the public know whatever changes have been made. But I am taking the authority to make changes on the fly without waiting for a board vote. We are just putting in the changes that are needed to keep kids safe. So.
Any questions or comments from Amber?
So if we catch kids, and the quarantine process, I know, is different from last year. So are we finding that, like, let's say there's a kid at the middle school, let's say they have a big sibling at the elementary and the high school, are they quarantining because they have close contact at home? Or it's not an automatic?
It's not an automatic. If you are an unvaccinated person and you have a positive COVID case in your house, then yes, you are on quarantine. If you're vaccinated, DHHS says that you may still continue, but you must be fully masked.
I know we talked in the past about additional COVID vaccination clinics. Do we know if there's been any progress in getting something in particular at homecoming this?
The homecoming truck or the vaccine truck would not come unless we could tell them exact number, which was unfortunate. Yeah, Rodney did call, and they would not come unless we would give them an exact number of vaccines that would be given out, which I thought was unfortunate. So I have been encouraging parents, I've had a lot of parents ask, and I have been encouraging parents to either wait for the November clinic scheduled at the Indian River School. I don't want to give an exact date. I know it is in the first week of November. But I've also just been encouraging people to go to Walgreens or CVS or sign up on the DHHS site. I've had a lot of parents from, especially from Indian River, rushing to get vaccinated, get their children vaccinated.
Now, if we could get someone here to do COVID vaccinations on, say, Saturday, when, you know, there'll be a number of people around for homecoming, for the high school's homecoming events, would that be something that would be all right?
Sure.
Okay, I can, let me check on that, and I know we have a wellness committee meeting on Thursday, so I'll plan to report back then.
Okay, that'd be great, because we were very disappointed. Rodney called a couple of weeks ago, and they said unless you can tell us an exact number, we're not bringing the truck.
And the vaccination clinic that you mentioned in it for possibly early November, is that, that's a COVID vaccination clinic?
Yes, we have two. We have both scheduled for the first week of November.
Okay.
Do we have any concept of what the vaccination rate is in the schools and the community? Do we have any numbers?
I have not looked up the vaccination rates. I'll probably check it right now for the community.
Well, just, you know, even concept though.
No, I wouldn't even dare to guess at the community level. At the, it's totally voluntary, right, to provide vaccination status here. So some parents have and some haven't, but I would not even dare to hazard a guess. We haven't put out a survey question or anything like that.
We don't really know how many kids are vaccinated or unvaccinated in the building. And we won't know.
Typically, when someone tests COVID positive, we do ask if there is a, if they are vaccinated and if the parents choose to offer that information. I can tell you that in the 26 cases that we've had, three have been vaccinated people. And those, two of those three have had a COVID positive person in their home.
Oh, so like they caught it from the COVID person in their home, okay.
The only other question I had was around, was around testing availability. I know that there are some districts here in New Hampshire, as well as in other states, that are doing surveillance testing. And then there's also this concept of test and stay that Vermont is, Massachusetts has been doing, Vermont is going to be implementing now as well. Is that something that we would ever consider? Understanding that there are resource constraints as far as the people resources in order to do testing on site? Is that something that we would consider, or it would be just not feasible with what we have?
It's honestly not feasible for us to just offer that blanket testing to anyone, you know, that had a kid with nipples, right? Like, and that's how it's presented. But what we would be potentially interested in is looking at testing larger cohorts if necessary. Say, the entire basketball team needed to be tested, you know, because we were exposed by some other school. We would potentially look at having the kids go in to do that. But I am very concerned that my nurses are overwhelmed right now, this contact tracing and the amount of work that Sarah Bollas has put in at the middle school would have been, you know, quadruple what she had to test, you know, all the kids. We are sending 10 to 15 kids out every day because they have some kind of symptoms. So if there were some supports from the government, you know, or from the state, or from local hospitals that would help us out with someone that could come here and provide the testing, we would love that. So if you come across anything like that, please let me know. Rob, do you have a number?
I do. According to the COVID dashboard for New Hampshire, 54% of New Hampshire residents are fully vaccinated. But a little caveat to that, there's also a percentage of age-eligible residents, so that would not include children under 12. And that number is 61.8% of New Hampshire residents that are age-eligible are fully vaccinated. And 67% have had at least one dose.
So can you break it down by town?
You can, but I don't know if you can do it from the state looks.
Yeah, I haven't.
Is it on the New York Times one?
Yeah, the New York Times, I've looked at, yeah. Why who's looking that up? Just to bounce off Daniel's question, would we be able to somehow in our sourcing, use SIR funds to buy tests that we can just give to parents, like at-home tests?
Yes, if we can ever find any at-home tests, yes.
Like have a box of here, and so here, send them home with a test.
We have some of those available, or will have some of those available when we can find them for some of our homeless or rural population students. Yeah.
Just another piece that was added today, masks are required on all buses. Yes, we now have assigned seats for kids. So if the contact tracing has been done, we started that today. So it's not 100% in place yet, but, you know, the kids got the certificate this afternoon when we were trying to put them where they need to be, we're getting siblings, putting siblings together. They're very young siblings. Even, it's difficult to put them in the high school, middle school sections, you know, so. So we, you know, we kind of stayed away, but for the most part, they kind of just fell in order, you know, and they did their thing today, so they're used to it. And also keeping the room hatches open, plus a couple of windows at all times. So just wanted, just so I know that we're doing that again, so, which is fine. I mean, I have windows open, hatches on all the time. Is there anyone else on the board before I open up to public? And public comment. Dr. Bupin?
Doing everything you can. I mean, if somebody's got a magic wand for vaccination, that would be the only thing. And unfortunately, I hope that's within our domain.
And I appreciate Amanda taking the reins and doing what she needs to do. Obviously, there'll be 100%, whatever she has to do, and like I was doing, you know, the safest environment possible.
I guess I would, as a member of the community, apologize for the behavior that they're taking out on teachers, administrators, staff. This is not your fault, and it's disappointing that members from our community are doing that.
We have Elise Payson.
It's Elise, thanks. I am just wondering, so my daughter was a close contact, and I pulled her out of school that day and don't plan to bring her back until she has a negative test. I'm curious how that will impact her attendance.
It will not impact her attendance at all. Just if you don't get that same response from the building principal, please let me know. But those will be excused absences. They will not count against her. There will be no report made for to the state that, you know, that she is educationally delinquent or anything like that. It also should be, your daughter should also be able to access her Google Classroom. I'm not sure how old your daughter is.
Yes, her teacher, her teacher was able to set her up with some work to do over even the next day or two while we wait for test results. So I'm not worried about her falling behind on schoolwork. I am taking a more aggressive approach and keep keeping her home and quarantining her, and so just wondered how my decision would impact her attendance record.
Yeah, no, those will be, those will be excused absences. They will not impact her record at all. If there's an issue with that, with the building principal, please send me an email and let me know.
Right, thanks.
And we have Justin.
Good evening. I've got two questions. One, first off, I want to say I thank everybody for what they're doing. I do realize that this is unprecedented times, and it's not a good answer for everything. But one, is there any discussion as to why we seem to be getting worse this year over last year? And two, there's been some subject brought up to me from my son about combining bus routes. And are we any further ahead with getting these buses a little bit freer to prevent, you know, anything from happening?
Sure, I'm happy to answer that. So why are we worse than last year? We're worse than last year, honestly, Justin, because people think that people are a little bit freer in the community, right? So there's, I see a lot more birthday parties. I see parents reporting, oh, well, we just had a large family gathering. And then they go, someone was COVID positive there. They didn't expect that to happen. So I see a lot more activity outside of the school setting that does seem to be bringing COVID in. When my elementary school principal can tell me that she has five, seven new cases, and she has to notify seven homerooms that they have potentially been exposed to COVID, I say, great news. Because that means that there was no spread in the classroom. Instead, it was spread that was brought in from outside. So yes, we have seen more cases, or we're about at where we were last year, total number of COVID positive cases. And I do attribute that to the behavior of people outside of the school setting, if that helps.
People being irresponsible.
Thank you. And bus-wise, yes, I have been told by Butler Bus, and this will come up in the busing update, but I'll give it to you now, that we will be adding a bus driver on Monday, and then another bus driver will be added about the end of October. And that stalling is because of the state of New Hampshire and the testing availability. So I do see two of our overcrowded, or crowded, they're not overcrowded, or I wouldn't be able to run them, two of our crowded bus routes being split up in less than, one in less than a week and one in about a month.
Okay, appreciate the end of the rainbow.
Yeah, me too.
My guess is that Dr. Bupin was perhaps also about to mention that the Delta variant as well is definitely a driver and a difference between this year and last year. If you look at the, you know, the, some of the data related to COVID-positive folks and how many people they were infecting on average earlier in the pandemic, it was more like two or three. And with the Delta variant, it's more like five to eight. And so definitely that has had an impact, I believe, in the community as far as the way that COVID is manifesting itself.
That's what I was going to say. Delta is much more infectious.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else reading, Kathleen? Yeah, okay. Does anyone have anything else before we move on?
Did you want vaccination rates by town? Couldn't get on New York Times because they wanted me to open up in a county. So I went to WMUR. So Enfield is about 62% fully vaccinated, and Canaan is 54% fully vaccinated. So just about, maybe a little above the state lines. Orange is at 53%. Dorchester is at 40% fully vaccinated. Grafton? 45% for Grafton.
Just statistically, the numbers for all of the towns, even the bigger ones, have a large error range of estimations.
I actually looked at the dashboard right before I came here on case numbers, and the top town in the region right now is Canaan. Actually, it has less, it has more than Lebanon and more than Hanover. Not more than Claremont or Newport, but more than our neighbors, so.
Or fully vaccinated?
No, no, I'm sorry, these are cases. Yeah, they're just like flat-out cases that are popping up, so. Get vaccinated.
Okay, I have a question. Do any of the towns individually have a plan to have some type of clinic to?
I know we don't need to go to Chester.
The only thing I know of in Canaan is that MTD has run some clinics out of their office, but the town of Canaan has not done anything that I know of to promote vaccinations. I wish they would, in their newsletter, but, you know.
More has in Enfield.
No doubt, not either.
I wonder if we could reach out to some of the social clubs and ask them, like the lines of the health sponsors of clinic.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
I'll make the call. Thanks, Kathleen.
Do we need any sort of motion?
Excuse me, sorry. This is Elise Payson. Again, I have another question, actually two things. I wanted to say that the state of New Hampshire does have a vaccine registry now, and all COVID vaccines should be reported in there. And part of the purpose of the vaccine registry is for schools to have easier access to vaccine information for their students. So I don't know where they are enrolling that out to schools, because it's a fairly new registry, but it may be worth somebody from the school district looking into that, reaching out to the state. Second, my question is, as I stated earlier, I'm choosing to follow the more aggressive CDC guidelines about quarantining if we have a close contact in our house. And I'm wondering if the school has considered that approach for people who have been deemed close contacts to a positive COVID case. I'm sure there are some pretty big repercussions to that, but just wondering what, if any, conversation has been taking place around that.
So Elise, what we have chosen to do is put those multiple layers in our schools. So our students are all at least three feet, if not more, apart. And we're trying to make sure that, you know, and everyone is masked. So when we start to think about, and honestly, when we notify, if we have a positive case in a classroom, we do notify the entire classroom just out of precaution, so that people will be able to monitor their kids to see if anybody picks up any symptoms. So going to that full quarantine is not what's recommended by the DOE and the New Hampshire DHH yet, I know it is recommended by the CDC. But we are constantly watching that to see if we do need to send larger cohorts of kids out or even teachers, which potentially would really put the school into a bind as far as staying open. So I view our mitigation strategies as something that are very flexible. And honestly, if I thought that there was a huge outbreak in a classroom, we would be forcing a quarantine on people if it were necessary, yes.
Okay, great, thanks. It's good to know that it's been discussed and that if there does happen to be several cases in a classroom, that that would be a consideration, just to try to stop it or slow it down.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
One more question for Amanda, are they, so they're notifying everybody in the classroom, so if there's a kid in the classroom, if they're on a sports team, are they notifying everybody on the sports team as well?
Yes, so, yep, we notify the entire sports team, the entire classroom, the entire van, the entire drama club, so whatever co-curricular activity that positive case may have been involved in, we are notifying, we are blanketing it. Because I would rather blanket the entire classroom or cohort or co-curricular activity so that people can make sure that they are watching for symptoms.
Do you have like a saturation level when you get to so many cases, you're not going to be able to do this? You know, with whoever's doing it, it's, this sounds like a lot already.
It's a lot, and I will tell you that Tina Fleming is very, very good at it. So we have a standard letter written, templated from the DHH, modified by the nurses and myself, that we have the principals just ready to send out and email out. Tina's been very efficient at it, not that it isn't a lot of work, and she was very happy not to have a COVID positive to report today, let me tell you.
I saw that.
But yes, it's a lot of work, but we're very good at it right now.
And you're having compliance with?
Yeah.
With the letters.
And the emails I can send out aren't really customized? It's the, it's the letter that says, your child. But it's not like, you know, it's not something that says, your, your son Zachary was exposed and freaked out, you know?
Thinking that if there was, you get a number of cases where you can't do it, you know, and, but we're not there, so.
Okay, so, Josh, do you have a motion?
I will make a motion that we extend our mask mandate indefinitely and authorize a mandate to take any further mitigation measures as we need, necessary.
Second, did Josephine Daniel Thompson, any further discussion from the board?
And we can revisit this anytime, obviously.
Do we want to put a date on it, or like through Halloween?
I was gonna say for the rest of the school year, what?
Through Halloween?
Well, I think it should be an agenda item for, until March, you know, yes.
The monthly, yeah.
Yeah, the monthly report.
The other, I think, bit of good news I read today was that they are possibly looking at a vaccine for five to 12-year-olds at the end, by end of Halloween.
Yeah.
And that one might be a great time to, or sometime thereafter to rethink about things.
If you have that motion, can we just hand me that back so we can include that monthly?
Yep, I think the board decided to have this as an agenda item monthly.
Okay, great, great, super. All right, anyone have anything else? Oh, the favor of the motion presented, Sidney Carvajal.
Aye.
Of course, perfections and the consequences. Thank you, everyone. All your input, greatly appreciated. Okay, continuing business, Budget Committee, Budget Committee met on September the 13th. And I attended as the board rep, and we missed the entire saying. And Scott, Amanda opened the meeting, and Scott Samborn was the chair. And I tried to get Rolly Andrew to do the, we defined the nomination. So instead, there was, he had to push, oh, oh, no, I'm sorry, Andrew defines, yeah, it was the other way around, and Rolly, Rolly ended up with it, and he was thinking Andrew in the mood.
It's good to factor one there, too.
Right. We're able to introduce Rob to everyone there. And we have, Amanda introduced Rob as the new business administrator. Also, as for the committee, we anticipate a good increase for this budget in the area of special education, which we've been struggling with this year already. So other than that, so Eleanor asked about some enrollment numbers and so forth. And our next meeting, I believe, is October the 4th here, I thought it was 6 p.m. And that was the fastest meeting I've ever gone to, it was done at 6:16. I said, I'm not gonna be able to beat your time, Scott. Yeah, 16:10 p.m. What is up, guys? So, anyway, it's exciting to see everyone again. There was only one member that was missing, and of course, we're still trying to recruit someone from Dorchester to fill a position. Haven't I heard if anyone has had any interest, so.
Is that gonna be an issue once, if we can't get a Dorchester representative, or are we just fortunate that you also could, we can say that you have the Dorchester, you know, your Dorchester voice?
Right.
You know, in case there's anyone that complains that not all towns were represented. I mean, done due diligence and trying to drum up some interest in serving on that committee.
It's like everything else, I would say, you know, I mean, if it's not a select few.
You only have so many people on here.
Yeah, exactly. Unfortunately. Kathleen?
I have a question, on page two, the second line, it reads, "The board reviewed," should it say "The committee reviewed regarding the meeting schedule"?
Well, I was outside, second line.
The Budget Committee.
Oh, yeah. Can we change budget minutes here, or do we do the budget meeting?
Yes, that should be done in the Budget Committee, we can point that out to them.
Yeah. I'll bring that to them in a minute. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, or anything else on that?
All right, EIC, so we met the other week and talked to Kevin Toll, talked about Mask Number 101, which is still kind of new to him being here, but he had, you know, been able to, you know, he knows all the freshmen really well, so has been able to get some good information. You know, so we really kind of batted around the idea of Mask Number 101, and what does that mean? Because we knew it was gonna be a fluid thing, we didn't, we knew this was not a final version. And so, kind of what we came up with in talking to Kevin, and talking to Amanda, and talking to Angel, we kind of saw that there are a lot of things that the kids probably need before they get to high school, like the study skills, the note-taking skills, and we probably, and Kevin was like, that'd be best, better served in eighth grade, you know, so we're like, well, maybe we can incorporate some of those things into the eighth-grade curriculum. And then, if I'm saying I've been wrong, please correct me, Amanda. And, you know, and then what we can also do, though, is Health only has a half-credit requirement from the state of New Hampshire, and we run a full-credit Health course. And so folding some of those Mask Number 101 things in there, so you have like physical health, and you have digital health, and you have, you know, all those other types of health-type things. It's more than just like your physical body, you know, it's your social health, all that sort of thing, academic health. So we can kind of merge those two together and, you know, have those freshmen be able to take just one course, because what we found also is that when we talked about doing it, we were kind of like, oh, we can have kids take Health freshman or sophomore year, scheduling, in reality, that did not play out very well. And so this might be the way to do it. So that's kind of where we're at, they're gonna look at how it goes this year, but I think that might be the plan for next year, we'll talk about it again. That's for there. And that kind of segued into a nice talk that Angel is going to start doing an overhaul or a look at the program of studies at the high school here, to see what classes we offer, what are we missing, like what kinds of courses are we missing, what kinds of courses are updated, what, you know, that sort of thing, because it's been a while. And also with the NEAS visit coming up in the next couple of years, having a fresh course of studies is really good for that. So I'm off with that, and that, we will have, we'll talk a lot more about that in the future. And then we talked about, actually Kathleen brought, you want to come back, Kathleen? Or you want me to sum it up?
Go ahead.
Okay. Kathleen wanted to know, like, how do we teach 9/11 in schools? And, because she watched something that, you know, the guy goes around and explains this, and kids just don't know what it is, like high school kids, or it's like 9/11, what? So she wanted to make sure that we were, you know, able to cover that, and so Amanda's gonna come back with some information on what they do in ninth-grade civics. You know, we're gonna find out what they do in other school studies classes for that, but we do know they cover some of it, but it is a huge, you know, topic, so. But we talked a little bit about masking, talked about vaccines, a little vaccinations, and then, oh, then we talked about drama, and we kind of discussed the idea of being able to add some drama classes with the existing staff, and Angel was into that, and she's, you know, that had some really good ideas for how they could get this one person to do a class of this, and kind of moved it around and get it going that way, so. Yeah, that's what we talked about, any questions?
I think I said one, I really am interested in hearing more about how many of these students with the X and the E before they come here, and get their orientation, you know, preparing them, the selection of those classes, because that's facing a lot of parents like, what am I doing here? You know, when they speak out, and regarding the school, that orientation, maybe, because it's not what their kids want, and all of this, but I think if they had a better understanding of the type of classes that was expected of them throughout their high school career, I think that would be really beneficial for them to have that little tutorial early on.
Yeah, so I think that might be the direction we go, so.
Yes, that would be very pleasing to see, yeah. Okay, anyone else?
And including in that, as, as students and families are talking about classes starting with the ninth grade year, and perhaps kind of the four-year progression, to expect, thinking, introducing programs like New Hampshire Scholars, it's really important to do that earlier so that the sequences can be fulfilled in order for our students to qualify for some of those things, like scholarships and free applications to New Hampshire, free admissions application for some of the future colleges and universities. So having that stuff be something that they're thinking about in advance, I think is only super beneficial. You know, the other thing that I hope, that might come out of the program of studies is not only what we're offering here on site, but what are the things, what are the opportunities that our students have access to that they may not be fully taking advantage of now? So during the pandemic, we did, in remote learning, V-Lax kind of blew up. But also those opportunities for, for dual enrollment, that's critically important and something that personally I think is more advantageous than EP coursework, because of the ramifications of that COVID or co-secondary education. So having more opportunities and having, having more families understand and students know that those are, those are things that they can do would be, I think, super, you know, pepper some of that stuff in.
Anyone else? And we have the superintendent's report, Samantha.
You do have my written report in your packet. There's not a lot left for me to say, I sort of said it all. But the bottom of my report does state that we do ask if children are not feeling well, especially exhibiting symptoms like a cold or, you know, the flu or something like that, please keep your kids home. That has been how COVID has presented to us, looks just like a cold. So we do ask that if kids are not feeling well, do not try to sneak them to school, we will find them and send them home. And then at the very bottom of the letter, I do have the measures that the Indian River School has put in place, the extra measures of separating cohorts at recess, which I know is unpopular but necessary. Cohorts remaining in the classrooms and the teachers moving from classroom to classroom, this helps alleviate congestion in the hallway, thus helping alleviate the spread, potential spread, or kids getting, you know, just too close to one another, they're just, they're too close, so they're middle school kids, and they are too close anyway. And then I do have written on there, increased cleaning practices, but by that I do mean instead of the bathrooms being cleaned, you know, every hour, on the hour, they are now cleaned every 30 minutes or, you know, to the best of our ability. So we are increasing the spraying with hydrostatic cleaners that we have, making sure that we're getting into classrooms during, when kids are outside of the classrooms with a food-friendly spray. But we are increasing those cleaning practices just to help move, kill any virus that may be airborne in there. So that was one more thing, I don't want anyone to think that we had gone back to cleaning practices prior to COVID, so we have taken our COVID cleaning practices and increased upon those.
Okay, any questions for Amanda? Is Mary interested? This is the most, okay, Rob?
Good evening, you already presented a Budget Committee report, so we have started some budget discussions with the individual schools, and we are maintaining our calendar of budget meetings, so those are underway. Initial budget discussions are taking place, and we'll have more in the coming weeks, so we're on schedule for that. I sent out some bid requests for some of our energy usage for pellets, propane, and heating oil, I've received some bids back. That's an agenda item for later, so I'll go into more detail then, and that's about it.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Well, it's time. Educational funding mentioned?
Uh, okay, right on.
Public comment response, I think you, or what we had to do?
Yes, I will say that I did not have a chance to respond to all the emails that were sent to me regarding my email on Friday, so I will just let that be said.
I was wondering if, I know there was some talk about the intersection here going on, and I did get a chance to get on Facebook, I rarely do, but I did. And one of the things I saw that we provided, it's a transportation link to the survey for the Upper Valley Regional, I don't even, Tim, you know, right?
So I guess it was a good point to state in the informational letter that I put in the packet, so I have a job, I work with the Upper Valley Lake Sumpi Regional Planning Associate, I'm an associate planner, we do traffic studies, we do, we do road tests, we do all sorts of things with that, and so if we, if for some reason the school decided to do anything with the intersection, we do a lot of consulting on intersections in traffic. So therefore, I hereby refuse myself of any discussion about that intersection specifically. But yes, you are.
I just wanted to know what the name was, but anyways, there is a survey sponsored by whatever Tim said.
Tim's job.
And it's a good survey, and I filled it out, and I would maybe, you know, potentially recommend that we put it on the website that our community, I mean, I know there's a lot of concern, and people can speak directly to, and that would be good input. So I think that's something that maybe we can be proactive about.
I can say that as the Route 4 corridor, so.
Yeah, and it's not just Route 4, but it's a great survey, and it's very simple and it's quick.
I'd like to see that come to financial facilities, if that's a review.
Should we look at that first there?
A meeting next week, it's Wednesday. It's Wednesday and see, I knew there's some other movements out there from the private sector of people very concerned.
Yeah.
And hopefully, behind the scenes, so it's totally got that out of it.
That was, that was actually, we put it on an agenda for you.
Right, so if that's okay, Amanda, we could add that.
So want it as an agenda item of the finance and facilities?
Trying to think where it would fall. I mean, it would fall either under, yeah, it could fall under facilities.
It's transportation.
You know, basically, that transportation, but mostly facilities, it is part of our facilities, so. So we'll start there, but thank you for bringing that up. Anything else on that? Bus routes and the driver update, which you managed to touch base on. I don't know if you had any further.
So I do, I do not have anything further to say other than I expect a new driver to, not a new driver, a returning driver to start on Monday. So there will be updated route sheets available to parents in the next few days. So those emails will go out. I would expect, I don't want to make any promises on which exact routes will be split. So I will caution parents, if your student rides one of the combined routes, to be on the lookout for the email. One of the other combined routes will be split up the end of October when testing is finally completed on the newest driver. So those are the updates that I have from others' press.
Okay, any questions? Thank you, Amanda. And next on the agenda, we have a grant proposal to the Friends of Massoma for the library in the amount of $1,000. Am I in front of your hand or?
There's a couple of them from Friends of Massoma.
Couple, right?
Okay. So at the very bottom of the page, there's one also could be for $2,900. I'm sorry, I'm going by the agenda.
Oh, I won't buy it, sorry.
It's okay. It's important, I don't want you to miss that.
So the grant proposal for Friends of Massoma for a washer and dryer in the amount of $2,940 from the Indian River School. And so there's several projects that are on here.
In this here?
I'm here.
Hi, Tina.
Hello. She sounds like she's a tiny little box.
Yeah, you sound like a little box.
No, before I start, can I just say one thing about my team?
Yes, please.
So I, I just want to say, like, yes, it's been very difficult at Indian River School, trying to make sure to keep our school community safe. But I could not have done it without Sarah Boas, Farissa Ignacio, Tina Buckwald and Shannon Poitras in April. Like, helped field all those calls, helped support parents that were concerned. Amanda was fielding calls, like, I really, I couldn't have done it without them. Sometimes they were fielding calls after hours. So, you know, we weathered the water storm and then we, we weathered the COVID storm, so let's just, that be it. But it was that team that got us that, like, all the effort. Sarah Boas and I would talk more times on a weekend that I care to think about. So just definitely, it was all of them. And April, and Amanda's message to the parents, the support has been overwhelming. Donations, just kind words to the staff. So this community is amazing. I think they just needed to know that we were doing everything we could to keep their kids safe. So, and we are. So I really, this is a week and a half here, but we'll get through it. So I just wanted to say that because I couldn't do it without them.
Thank you. All right, so you have a proposal for us tonight in regardless, is this washer and dryer or is this bulk of the letter that we, we want to?
There's multiple requests for grants. So our washer and dryer is a Sears Kenmore, probably as old as me circa, which is old. So that definitely, it needs to run multi-time, many, many times to dry things. Sometimes we wash kids' clothes, we support things that are building. So I put in the proposal from them and that's in, you know, once you consider it. I had also, they had an opportunity for us to obtain a refrigerator and that's part of the New Hampshire Food Bank. And that would be supported because we don't have a dollar amount because it's through Friends of Massoma making the connection through New Hampshire Food Bank. And that's to hold food that needs to be cold to go home with kids. There's a educational breakout kit, that was Jennifer Holland of the Librarian. Then we also have a request from Friends of Massoma for craft works, which is an enrichment program run by Mr. Wood. And then I also did apply for a smaller grant to create some pollinator gardens as enrichment activities.
Anyone have any questions for Tina?
Tina, the appliances, the washer and dryer, are those commercial-grade ones that you're trying to upgrade to?
So they're really expensive. Who knew? Let's see if we can even get them. So that's why the cost was like $2,900 because they're commercial-grade, high-energy efficient, really reduction, like, save on water as well. So that's why they're so expensive. Clearly, we're at the mercy of, you know, what Friends of Massoma will support, but it was really, you know, something that we noticed in the building is really in need.
No last long time.
I agree, yeah.
Because those are probably, because those are the building.
And they're old, like, I'm old, they're older than me, like, it's crazy.
You think they're older than the building? Possible.
Wait, if older, wait, I'm older than the building, so.
Oh, boy.
So, yeah, I, they offered, she said that was a great worthy causes. So I really appreciate the support of Friends of Massoma when I put those in.
Okay. So I wanted to check to see, because these look like applications that have already been submitted and not necessarily funds to, that we need to make a motion to accept. I just want to.
Yes.
Just put this to what we're doing.
I need your approval to move forward with those. So to go finish the application process, that's what I need your approval for because of the amount.
Okay. Gotcha. All right, great.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, I'd like to see a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the IRS requests for, of applications for grants for Friends of Massoma, for four from Friends of Massoma and one from the IRS PTSA and one from CHS Foundation. Do we have a list out how much? Or just because we don't have to prove a dollar?
It's just approval.
For the submissions.
Yeah.
Yeah, we only really need board approval over the $1,000.
Okay, oh, so, okay.
I'll second that.
All right, then I, I just amended to say the ones from Friends of Massoma money. Because the other ones are under $1,000.
Any other questions, any other comments? Seeing them, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Attention. And pass. All right, Tina, you're outside, thank you. Good luck.
Big, yeah, we got this. We made it a whole day.
I know. Okay. So. Do you have the AV club's grant?
Yes, I think that, the grants are the.
Baby club is behind the bids. What's that?
Because I know all the, all the grants were together on the same cover date.
Got it. So this is the level.
So now we're going to use a CD. So this is, oh, yes.
So I'll, I'll make a motion so we can start to discuss. I made a motion that we approve the request to start the AV club at the high school.
I think he said it.
I'll second.
Okay, we will second. There you go. All right.
So this is a little different than a lot of the other club requests because it's, it's been submitted with the, with the faculty and advisors and not with the student's name and info on it. But we've talked about this club and this offering, so definitely in support of it. Yeah, it's been also done in conjunction with the athletic director, co-curricular activities director, Brown also.
Anything?
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Has there been some preliminary interest? I don't, I don't know how you gauge that.
So I believe.
But I, I figure Seth will probably hear from kids.
Yeah, and I believe they sort of had a, hey, would you be interested in this kind of a club? Show up. And how about, how many students did you have show up, Seth?
We didn't know, six students so far.
All right.
There's a lot more about, he talked about their interest to me in the hall, so.
Nice.
There's, there's a lot there still in, like, sports.
Yeah.
But they don't do sports like in winter or spring. So we're expecting it's going to be next throughout the school year.
Awesome. Very cool.
Absolutely. All right, anyone else?
Yeah, there's lots of great opportunities. Do we have any interest from IRS students that, you know, could this be something that is like a campus-wide?
Absolutely. So those, the IRS process is a little bit different, so we can just kind of start up a club there. So we've looked at a Lego club, we've looked at the AV club pushing down there when it gets started here. So, yeah, big plans for this. I think this is going to be really, really, really good for kids.
Yes.
Okay. See, nothing further. All those in favor of supporting the AV club, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Absentee. And pass. Thank you. Okay, Rob, we will move on to the, the propane and the oil bid. So you, oh, you've got pellets too.
And pellets.
Yeah.
So there's a couple prints outs for your, in your packet. I'm going to sort of talk about propane and oil together because the lowest bid came from the same supplier.
Okay.
And that would be Irving Oil. So this year for propane, it's a $1.737 for, per gallon for propane and $2.54, $0.55 for oil. One caveat, though, is I got an email just a couple hours ago from the rep who said that the price between yesterday, when I received the bid, and today has gone up. Oil went up a penny and a half, propane is up almost five cents from yesterday. So propane is climbing quickly and she hopes it won't climb too much by tomorrow. So I can secure a contract. Oil is probably a little bit slower, she thinks that will probably stay the same for tomorrow. But propane is, is, the cost of propane is rising quickly as we get into the heating season and also global demand versus domestic supply. So that's one thing to consider. So my recommendation would be for Irving, we've used them in the past and they combine propane and oil together, they can supply both. So for pellets, the lower bid came with Lime Green Heat, which is also our current supplier. And that's at $234 a ton. They are also our servicer for our boilers. So it would be nice for one-stop shopping to have our supplier and our service with the same vendor. And I'm not, I haven't heard of any wild price swings with pellets between yesterday and tomorrow.
No.
Hopefully that'll stay steady.
Okay.
So my recommendation would be also for Lime Green Heat for pellets.
Or if you want to bundle them together and, like, with, so it's specific pricing then again on a propane, would be like a $1.70 per gallon, should we note that in the, or?
Final price may be closer.
Certainly vary. Whatever the market value for.
You, you won't know until they lock in.
Yeah.
And I can tell you from experience, we had propane delivered at our house last week and they charged us $4.49 a gallon.
Wow.
So we're shopping for another propane supplier.
Yeah.
We've never paid that.
No, that's crazy.
Is there such a thing as buyers' clubs with municipalities? I know that you can do it individual, there's like a part of a buyer's club.
Right. Not that I know of, I haven't heard of one.
Where you join in with other school districts.
Getting a good rate because we're a large.
Right.
A large customer.
Yeah, that's about the same price there as the buyer's club that we've entered.
Right. So I think, you know, just on sheer volume, we, we pack as a.
You're there already.
Compared to residential. So, and I'm, I would, I would hope that by tomorrow, the locked-in price for the market would be not too far off.
Get up early.
Set it right now. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve oil bid to Irving Energy. Do you want the total cost? With the price for.
Right, I, I was going to say, how are we going to capture the, the motion so that it is flexible enough to accommodate tomorrow's pricing? All right, lock in.
Tomorrow's price.
Well, these are bids, so.
Yeah, oh, that's.
We can approve the bid.
Take it as a bid.
Yeah.
And if there's a substantial difference, then.
Yeah, okay, we, yes, definitely.
I'm overthinking this, yeah. All right, then I make a motion that we award the bid for propane to Irving Energy, the contract for oil, number two fuel oil to Irving Energy, and the wood pellets to Lime Green Heat.
Second. Anything else?
The only other question I had is that knowing that it, it looks like all of the bids for the oil and propane exceed the budgeted amount, is that a concern that you have? Or you just, it just is what it is?
I don't, there's really not much I could do about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're close on one of them, aren't we?
Yeah.
One of them is very, very close.
One of them's within like $1,500.
One of them's pretty close.
Two thousand.
And two thousand bucks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Last year was.
Well, luckily, we only use oil when we heat up this building in the morning.
Exactly.
On Mondays, for most of it.
Yeah. Is our own budget for that. So this is where we're on budget, anyone?
Yeah. So, okay. Anything else? Seeing them, all in favor of the signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Absentee.
That was a much hoped for.
Okay, we get to enter for the next meeting. Well, then I'll give you a report. I still refer to enrollments as B2 sideline. Anyone say anything? I'll open it up, what happened to comments? Yeah? Now this is not likely. Well, I really appreciate everyone coming tonight and, um, for me at school. I appreciate it. Anyone else have anything to add?
Without, with your lead?
Nope.
Nope.
No.
We have personnel resignation nominations on my green sheet.
If you do. All right. I'll make a motion that we approve staff nominations here as presented.
A second.
Thank you. Anything we need to know, Amanda?
Um, you just have a couple of transfers noted on there and some renewals for the teacher mentor, the PD programs. Yeah, so some minors and then the rest, the retirement of, for Caroline Morrison. So congratulations to her.
So when you say follow the student, is that always been customary with, with parents in those particular programs?
Yes, so that would be true. It is common practice, I'm not sure why we needed to put that comment in there because it is common practice in education to move a paraprofessional with a student, right? So I would not send a student to the Indian River School and have, and leave a paraprofessional behind and have one school overstapped and one school understaffed.
Right.
So you would typically move a student or move a paraprofessional with a student in order to fill that gap rather than hiring new. So yes, that is customary, I'm not sure why we even needed to know that.
Thank you, Fred. Seeing them, all in favor of the staff nominations as presented and no one resignation with regret. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Absentee. And do we have any non-publics, right?
Um, we do have non-public for the purposes of hiring and for a legal update.
Legal is L, right?
I don't know. I'm not sure, don't quote me on it.
I'll make a motion, we go to non-public in accordance with RSA 91-A for a free room to B and L or whatever legal is.
I know, I just looked it up.
A second, thank you, Kathleen. Tim Josephson?
Aye.
Daniel Thompson?
Aye.
Aye.
Kathleen Stacy?
Aye.
Paul Chagno?
Aye.
And Felipe, aye.
You're good.
You're good.
You're good. Good. Thank you, Robert.
Have a good night, O.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh my goodness, I always call that. I was like, oh, you're definitely going to have to be sitting outside. This means you'll be long. No, you know, I just tell her to prepare for it and bring a book.
Yep.
I didn't know Chris wasn't going to be here.
That is the one and it's the same.
Yeah.
Much. So we started waiting and removing it.
We'll, we'll see.
I'm so excited because I have a order to pick up at BJ's between eight and nine and I think I'm really going to get there.
Well, I think it's really handy now.
It is very handy.
You know, like, I, I go and shop stores now, but it's so handy. It's new staples, like.
Oh, yeah. And then, and like at BJ's, and you do that.